...of people without power, stable homes, and access to food and water. A decade later, our neighborhoods are still recovering. As a city, we must be more prepared for the coming storms. In the past two years alone, we've been heavily impacted by Tropical Storm Isaias and Hurricane Ida, among other extreme weather events. We are continuously feeling the effects of climate change, so it is critical that we take the necessary steps to make our neighborhoods more resilient and sustainable. Just yesterday, the Council Committee on Resiliency and Waterfronts, together with the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure, held a joint oversight hearing on the 10th anniversary of Superstorm Sandy. In our districts and throughout the city, we're hosting events to commemorate the anniversary, reflect on the lessons learned, and compel adequate planning for the future. The Decennial Citywide Climate Adaptation Plan required by a law the council passed calls for the city to outline measures for resiliency that protects residents, property, and infrastructure. It prioritizes the most vulnerable areas and parts of the city historically harmed by a lack of environmental justice. The plan was due on September 30th and has yet to be published, and we're awaiting that plan like all New Yorkers. As a city, we must advance efforts to make our city more resilient and stronger, and an actionable transparent plan is essential. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. We will be voting on the following land use items. Ninth Street rezoning will rezone a mid-block section of Ninth Street in the Gowanus area of Brooklyn within Community District 6 and Councilmember Hanif's district. It will also include a text amendment to designate in MIH area an mixed-use district. The project will facilitate the development of a five-story residential building with an estimated 22 units, 25% of which will be affordable, under the mandatory inclusionary housing program. This outcome represents a compromise that balances citywide housing needs with community priorities by simultaneously advancing affordable housing and industrial preservation in the aftermath of the previously approved Gowanus neighborhood rezoning to create 8,500 units of housing, 3,000 of which will be affordable. Gateway Site 26A in Phase 5, and UDAP Amendment, an HPD application that will facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use building with 191 affordable senior housing units and community facility in Councilmember Barron's district. In addition, an amendment to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan will facilitate the development of nine four-story buildings with approximately 560 affordable housing units. Finally, we will be voting on several HPD, UDAP, and tax exemption applications in the Morrisania and Morris Heights sections of the Bronx. Morrisania Open Door will facilitate the development of approximately 23 affordable homeownership units in Councilmember Stevens' district. Morris Heights, NCP, will facilitate the construction of two six-story residential buildings with approximately 28 affordable homeownership units in Councilmembers Sanchez's and Stevens' districts. Morrisania Clermont Village Open Door will facilitate the development of two family buildings with a total of 14 new units in Councilmembers Riley's and Stevens' districts. It will include seven affordable homeownership units through the Open Door Program and several affordable rental units. Additionally, we will be voting on a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Lastly, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation today. Introduction 258A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the mayor to designate an agency or office in coordination with the Department of Transportation and Department of Parks and Recreation to report on feasible locations for public bathroom facilities across the city. This bill would also require that the agencies or offices incorporate public and community board input regarding locations suitable for public bathrooms. I invite Councilmember Joseph, there she is, to come forward and speak on her bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. I'm really excited today to be passing my bill, Intro 258, which marks an important step towards ensuring all New Yorkers have access to public restrooms. Our bill will require Department of Parks and DOT to publish a report for feasible locations to install public bathrooms in every zip code across the five boroughs. The city's lack of public restroom is a multifaceted problem. It's an issue of equity, public health, sanitation, and basic human rights. While other modern cities have taken steps to prioritize public restroom access, New York City continues to lag behind. Currently, our city ranks 93 out of 100 largest US cities in number of public bathrooms per capita. So making our city cleaner, more livable, is just common sense issue. I want to give a big thank you to Borough President Mark Levine for his partnership on this legislation. He has spoken out, and he's been a champion for this for years. So I'm grateful to work with him. My colleagues here, thank you so much for the support to see public bathrooms installed across the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Rita.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, Introduction 291A, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera and Majority Whip Silvina Brooks-Powers. This intro would require the Department of Transportation and the Department of Parks and Recreation to develop a citywide greenway master plan with the goal of achieving a comprehensive network of greenways. Under the legislation, these agencies would create a working group tasked with identifying locations for possible development into greenways, establishing greenway design guidelines, and identifying opportunities for integrating greenway infrastructure and creating a list of early action greenway projects. The bill would also require that these agencies report annually on the implementation of the greenway plan and engage with community boards on all proposals. And I now invite Councilmember Rivera and Majority Whip Brooks-Powers to come forward and speak on their legislation.
Just so courteous. That's what happens with women. West drama. Thanks, everyone. I want to thank the Speaker, really, for her leadership and for acknowledging that it has been 10 years since Hurricane Sandy, and many of our communities were devastated. 44 lives, businesses and homes lost forever. And really, our infrastructure has been reviewed and looked at, and we know that we have to do better in planning a more resilient city. And in my district specifically, we are undergoing a very big project called the Eastside Coastal Resiliency Project, which is really unprecedented. $1.5 billion investment in fortifying our coastline to bring a park back to the community that is very heavily utilized. In that park is a greenway. So to know that not only will we be protected against future storms, we will have all the amenities that my district holds dear, and we will have the greenway that runs alongside East River Park. And so we want to ensure that greenways become a citywide amenity, that finally we finish a plan that was started 30 years ago. So I want to thank Majority Whip, Councilmember Silvina Brooks-Powers, for joining me on this journey. All of us are here today because we believe in a future for our city where New Yorkers of all backgrounds, ages, and abilities from every neighborhood in every borough can easily find open space and safely access active transportation. The city last issued a greenway plan in 1993 under Mayor Dinkins. So here we are, 30 years later, and proud to be voting to pass the citywide Greenway Plan Bill. It creates a comprehensive master plan, a vision for the future of greenways in New York City. Historically, it's been low-income neighborhoods and communities of color that have seen the least investment in greenway infrastructure. This legislation disrupts that pattern, and it ensures that neighborhoods, every neighborhood in every borough, is involved in the development of a master plan for the city that works for all New Yorkers. And the Majority Whip was instrumental in ensuring that this bill requires community engagement and outreach to build a plan and identify new greenways to link the existing network that will be supported by groundbreaking city and federal funding, a commitment we heard from Senator Schumer that has come to fruition. So along with my colleagues, I look forward to working closely with the mayor, all involved agencies, on implementing Intro 291, so that together we can deliver New Yorkers a greenway master plan for future generations that leaves no neighborhood behind. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Councilmember Rivera, and good afternoon, everyone. As the Chair for Transportation and Infrastructure, I'm so proud and honored to have had the opportunity to usher in some positive and transformative legislation. I commend Councilmember Rita Joseph on her advocacy around the public restrooms, which is needed. As someone who was pregnant and often looking for bathrooms coming off of the subway, I know a lot of those moms out there feel the same way, as well as the public and our livery cab drivers. And so I'm honored to be here with my colleague, Councilmember Rivera, celebrating the passage of the Greenway Bill. Today, it's all about greenways, and they're a vital part of our city's cycling infrastructure, providing safe scenic rights-of-way for travel and recreation. The Greenway Master Plan has been inactive since the Dinkins administration, as it's been mentioned, but after the pandemic, it prompted a cycling boom here in New York City. It's clear that we need to invest in our greenways and meet people where they are. And with the recent announcement that Senator Schumer secured over $7 million in coordination with the Federal Department of Transportation, we have a real opportunity here to make a profound impact on our greenways now. I'm proud to have partnered with all of our advocates and with Councilmember Rivera on Intro 291, which will reactivate the Greenway Master Plan and put our city's agencies back into action, maintaining this vital piece of infrastructure. And when I cast my vote today, I will be doing it in the spirit of former Mayor David Dinkins. Thank you.
Thank you so much to both of you on this great legislation. And next, the council will be voting on a package of rat mitigation and sanitation litigation legislation. New York City is currently experiencing a severe rat infestation problem, one that has impacted all communities. The increased number of rodents results in more property damage, food contamination, and disease transmission, as well as an overall impact on New Yorkers' quality of life. The council is focused on improving the health and safety of our neighborhoods, and this legislative package will bolster efforts to address the surge of rodents throughout the city. Introduction 414A, sponsored by Councilmember Chio Sei, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to issue an annual report on the city's efforts in rat mitigation zones, submit the report to the Speaker of the Council and the mayor, and make the report publicly available online. The report would describe the metrics that the Department of Health uses to measure the efficacy of rat mitigation in each zone, as well as their outreach efforts. I now invite the captain of the Rat Pack, Councilmember Chio Sei, to come forward and say a few words about this piece of legislation. We've been waiting for this.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Madam Speaker. As much as I would love to take the honor of being the captain, it's definitely our Chair of Sanitation, Councilmember Sandy Nurse. Today, our city takes a step away from its era of infestation and retreat and towards one of cleanliness and victory. The rats have plagued New York for so long, they have begun to define us. Depictions of New York in arts and media displayed two types of New Yorkers: the proud but hurried who walk the streets and the mean and furry who roam below them. Then, the notorious rats of our subways took advantage of our moment of weakness during the pandemic and rose up to claim our streets and our pizza. My colleagues and I in the city council formed the Rat Pack to fight back. Our Rat Package is a collection of four bills, all of which we expect to pass today. My bill, Intro 414, is a mandated reporting bill that will equip us with high-quality intel. The bill would require the city to report on the effectiveness of rat mitigation tactics and strategies in rat mitigation zones. With a report filled with data, we could see what is working to decrease the rat population and what we can improve upon. This bill joins three other bills to form a powerful weapon in war we must fight, and we will win. Now, let's not tell ourselves this is a silver bullet. Without a citywide enclosed trash container program, our gains against the rats will be modest, but we are laying the groundwork in mobilizing the government so that when citywide containerization becomes a reality, its effectiveness will be maximized. Today, the city council makes clear that we will stand our ground against New York's public enemy number one, rats. And I want to thank Antonio Reynoso, our Brooklyn Borough President, for his support and partnership on this piece of legislation, my Budget and Policy Director May Vuchapong Vitana for helping us move this through, our great Speaker Adrian Adams for championing this bill as well and allowing it to pass today, as well as the Rat Pack for continuing to fight against these rodents that, again, plague New York City. Thank you very much.
Introduction 442A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, would require that before a permit authorizing certain construction work that is subject to rodent extermination is issued, the applicants certify that a licensed exterminator was retained to effectively treat the premises for rodent extermination. I now invite Rat Pack member, Councilmember Eric Botcher, to come forward and say a deputy, yes, to say a few words about his bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Today is a day of firsts for me. It's my first pre-stated press conference, and it's my first bill today. And I'm so excited that this is a very, very meaningful piece of legislation that's going to help address a very serious problem here in New York City. I think that one of our primary responsibilities in government is to make New York a great place to live, a great place to work, and a great place to visit. But people aren't going to want to be here if we've got rats running over people's feet when they walk down the sidewalk. So what are we going to do about it? Today, we're passing a package of rat legislation that'll really help address a lot of these issues. I want to thank Manhattan Borough President Mark Levine for partnering with me on this bill that would require developers and builders to hire a pest management specialist before they get their permits. It's common sense. It's something that a lot of people think is already on the books, but it's not. You've got good actors who go ahead and do it. They bring on a licensed exterminator. Others don't. It's important because when you excavate these construction sites, you unearth the existing rat warrants and causes big problems. And then during construction, you've got piles of debris and lots of places for rats to find harborage. You really need to have those sites exterminated weekly, or else it's going to cause a big, big problem for the whole neighborhood. I want to thank my colleagues on the Rat Pack, specifically Chair Nurse. I'm really proud of the job that our sanitation committee has been doing this year, starting at the very beginning, when we fought for more sanitation funding, which I believe has made a difference. Corner Basket 311 calls are down 55% since a year ago, and that's something that this council, I really, I really think we can be proud of that. I want to thank Speaker Adams for really helping us be the best council members we can be and creating a space for us to come forward with our legislation, to advance our legislation. I felt really, really good about this council, and let's go out and get those rats.
Thank you, Councilmember Botcher. Introduction 459A, sponsored by Councilmember Shawna Brayu, would require that the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene designate rat mitigation zones throughout the whole city. This bill would also allow the Department of Sanitation to determine the times during which buildings must set out their garbage and recycling for collection. In addition, Introduction 460A, also sponsored by Councilmember Abreu, would require buildings which receive two or more rodent-specific housing maintenance codes or two or more rodent-specific health code violations place their refuse in rodent-proof containers for at least two years. The bill permits the Department of Sanitation to waive this container requirement wherever it would cause an undue hardship or public safety hazard. And I now invite Councilmember Abreu to come up and speak about his bills, as well as our Rat Pack co-chair, Madam Chair, Sanitation Committee Chair Sandy Nurse, to also speak about the entire rat mitigation legislative package.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Madam Speaker, for your leadership in helping us secure these bills to passage and making sure that we put our strongest foot forward in making this a reality. And of course, to our Chair, Sandy Nurse, she has been incredible in piecing together these legislations and performing together the Rat Pack. She has been our leader at every step of the way. New York City has achieved a monumental victory in humanity's war against rats. After nearly a year of research, negotiations, and partnership with experts, Labor, Department of Sanitation, and council colleagues, we have done what formal councils and administrations could never achieve. Our offices secure support for a bill which will reduce the amount of time trash sits on our streets. It used to be 14 hours, now that's going down to four hours. This will keep our streets clean and starve rats of the midnight snacks that sustain their explosive growth. Families will no longer have to navigate as many mountains and mazes of trash piled up outside of their apartments. New Yorkers won't have to fear as many rats hiding in late-night shadows, or more frequently rampaging through our subway system and sidewalks without fear. This is not to say that we're going to make rats extinct, but we're making a huge progress here in reducing their presence. Our children will never understand why we let waste sit out outside for extended period of times, for hours on end, like the fax machine, typewriter, and the BlackBerry. Our current collection schedule will be seen by future generations as archaic, comical, and out of date. This was not an easy feat, but city-altering change never is. I am most proud that the Rat Pack was able to do this work together in partnership with Labor and the administration. Rats may be our neighbors, but they are not our friends. New Yorkers can rest easy knowing we are fighting back. Thank you again, Madam Speaker, and to Chair Nurse.
Thank you. It's really hard to keep a straight face on this issue, which is why we just leaned in hardcore. So, good afternoon, everyone, and just thank you so much for including me today. I know it's a little out of tradition, but just want to say that as the Chair of the Sanitation Committee, our team and this committee has really hit the ground running to try to respond to the needs and concerns of New Yorkers. New Yorkers were calling in significantly more numbers than they have in the past around dirty conditions and rodent infestation, so it was a priority of this committee to really address the basics, the baseline of our everyday quality of life. So I'm really, really proud of this committee that we've been able to do that. We started in February. We rallied to get sanitation done. We called for $22 million for additional basket service, which did bring down the 311 stats we just found out in our last hearing. We requested $4.9 million in rat mitigation services that we won. We knew this was not enough. This plan, this package, I'm really proud that I was able to help curate, and I was really proud to partner with all the leads. We know it is not going to solve everything, but this is definitely putting the groundwork in place. There are some real instrumental things about this. Councilmember Botcher's bill is going to be hugely instrumental, especially in neighborhoods that have significant construction and development. But looking to the future, we do know that the real rat mitigation strategy is going to be the mandatory Universal Curbside Organics Plan. We should pass that as soon as possible. And containerization. But in the meantime, this is going to move us forward. So I just want to thank my staff, Nell Hernandez, our Ledge Director, our Chief of Staff, Mohammed Khan, also the brain behind the rats lobby that brought a lot of the press out over the last couple of months. I want to thank the Sanitation Committee Task Force working in the background, and Antonio Reynoso, our Borough President. These were some of his bills. Borough President Mark Levine. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams on both packages, our Rat Action Plan and our Zero Waste Package, which we hope to pass. It's been very easy to approach and say, "We'd like to pass this," and you facilitated that for us, so thank you so much. Thank you all.
This is just so good. I'm just taking all of this in. You know, those of you that have been around the council, I'm off script, those of you that have been around the council for a while, who would ever think that we would be standing around celebrating the Rat Pack? Just saying. It's what happens when women lead. We have our priorities, ladies and gentlemen. Finally, as we conclude Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it is important that we continue to address gender-based violence and support its survivors with the care and services they need to heal. To end cycles of violence and address the trauma that it causes, we must work to create a safe environment where survivors have access to the stability, resources, and assistance that promote their health and safety. That is our collective responsibility in government, and with today's Support Survivors legislative package, the council is advancing the city's services for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence. The following bills are sponsored by our Women and Gender Equity Committee Chair Tiffany Caban. Introduction 153A would require the Office to End Domestic and Gender-Based Violence, or ENDGBV, in consultation with the Department of Social Services, or DSS, and community-based organizations to establish a program to provide survivors of domestic and gender-based violence with a low-barrier grant and support services that help them with expenses related to maintaining housing. The bill would also require ENDGBV to report on the program on an annual basis. Introduction 154A would require ENDGBV to establish an online portal and written resource guide of available services for survivors of domestic and gender-based violence in New York City. The portal and guide would be available in the designated citywide languages. The guide would also be available in Braille. The portal would also include a link to other relevant city-run websites and portals that provide information on services for survivors in the city, along with a description of types of such resources. The bill would also require ENDGBV to conduct outreach on the portal and guide and ensure the portal is secure and confidential to protect the privacy of survivors. And Resolution 111 would call upon New York State to pass legislation that would provide domestic violence survivors and their families with job-protected paid leave, similar to that of New York State's paid family leave law, to be used for any activities related to their actual or perceived status as a domestic violence survivor or family member of a domestic violence survivor. I now invite Councilmember Caban to come forward and speak about this important legislative package.
Thank you very, very much. I just want to start by saying that, like, I woke up this morning with a little extra pep in my step, feeling exceptionally proud, prouder than on any other day usually, to be a part of this body, because this is like a really dope suite of legislation that we are passing today. And so, like, you know, it's very, very cool, and it's a privilege to be a part of. I want to thank everybody that's supported, and also, I know that we say this a lot, but it's worth repeating over and over again, it's, you know, no coincidence that in a majority-women body that we are quickly advancing gender equity legislation, and that's something to be really proud of. And this is about doing right by survivors. You know, this session, the Committee on Women and Gender Equity has been uncovering the barriers to accessing services that survivors face. We have heard from the courageous survivors who testified before us, telling us their personal stories and identifying the institutional and policy-based factors that contributed to their lack of access to the services that we owe them. And I'm committed to removing those barriers and proactively establishing the programs that survivors say that they need. And, you know, I think it's important to note that the link between domestic violence and homelessness is complex, but it's well-established, right? You know, with domestic violence being a leading contributor to family homelessness, not just here, but nationally. And, you know, this is very clearly also a public safety issue. I spent a little over seven years as a public defender, and I can tell you, survivors get criminalized every single day and have stood next to survivor after survivor in a matter of minutes. A court appearance, that last five minutes, a survivor has their home taken away from them, has their children taken away from them, has their job taken away from them. And so this is really the approach that we need to be taking. We can't just be a city that punishes people for violence. We can't just cynically exploit the pain of survivors to direct more money to policing and incarceration. We actually have to meet survivors' needs. And that's why it's so important that we pass this Support Survivors legislative package. And I just want to build on the things that it consists of, and I know that the Speaker covered them, but, you know, Intro 153, it's a program that addresses the economic precarity that again and again we have heard from survivors, it's a central barrier to their leaving dangerous situations, accessing the services that they need, and beginning to heal. And it does this by providing those low-barrier urgently-accessible grants to survivors for housing, for medical, counseling, legal, and other immediate expenses and services, which could range from moving costs to cellphone costs to costs associated with developing a safety plan, and so much more. Intro 154, that online portal, you know, where all of those services are laid, clearly laid out, and I won't repeat it, but, you know, this addresses the specific problem of access that often arises even when the city already offers the service, right, that the survivor needs. Since different services are housed in different departments and organizations, it's really hard sometimes to find out about, locate, and access the service a given survivor needs. And then finally, you know, that resolution is important because, like the vast And then finally, you know, that resolution is important because, like the vast majority of my fellow New Yorkers, I know I support universal paid leave, but even if it's going to take us a little while longer to win that, there are certain sets of people that we should agree that require immediate attention, and that includes survivors of domestic, intimate, partner, sexual, and gender-based violence. And so for the sake of survivors, as well as their loved ones and coworkers, we shouldn't be forcing them to work amid the trauma of that violence. So I'm really, really proud that we are taking significant steps towards supporting survivors, keeping them safe and healthy, and providing pathways to healing. So again, I just want to thank my colleagues and the Speaker and all of the advocates who have made this work possible. Yeah, it's a cool day.
That concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we will all take on-topic questions first.
What questions on the items being voted on today?
Question for Councilmember Abreu. On the rat bill, like specifically the one about putting garbage out later, there was criticism right after the mayor had announced that, you know, rats are nocturnal and this would really not be curtailing their ability to eat garbage that much. Wow, it does feel funny talking about this. I guess, like, what's your response to that? Is there, you know, anything else that could be done to lessen the amount of time that trash is on the street?
I think it's very important to reduce the amount of time that garbage sits out on the street. As I mentioned before, reducing the amount of resources to a very limited period of time, it stresses rats. And by reducing those food sources, that's also directly linked to reduce reproduction. And so I think this would make a huge, make huge progress in reducing the presence of rats. But again, this is not going to make them go extinct. I've said that before. It's important to increase stress upon them. This is a war we're taking on, right? And so we're using everything at our disposal to make it a reality.
Can I ask about the agenda? Can I ask about something about the agenda? Yeah, just what was the agenda today?
Speaker, please just explain a little bit why there's not a resolution today on the agenda regarding the redistricting of the maps.
Why there is not a resolution regarding the redistricting map? Sure. Well, the process of redistricting, we know that today is the deadline. We only need to pass a resolution if we reject the maps. We're not passing a resolution because a majority of council members have supported moving forward with the current maps as-is. Great question. Thank you.
Now, moving on to on topic.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, your colleague Lincoln Ressler over the weekend told us that he believes the council needs to take action, tighten regulations around city employees carrying guns in the workplace. This is in response to our reporting about Chief Technology Officer Matt Frager caring while at work. I'm just curious if you agree with Councilmember Ressler and just in general, what you think about the fact that the CTO is caring about the workplace.
Great question, and thank you for it. I was disturbed by the report. And we really do need to take a look at the work that we do, the legislation that we pass, and we have to be true to that legislation. We just went through passing legislation and speaking a couple of weeks ago about the laws through the spaces in Times Square. I think that if we're going to stay on point, then we all need to agree that this is the stance that we're going to take. So the answer would be, we definitely need to take a look at that. And I do not necessarily disagree with the councilmember's stand.
Gotcha. And just on a separate topic, we reported last night, too, that National Guard troops have been deployed into city homeless shelters with migrant response. A lot of these National Guard troops were originally on the Randall Side of the HERC. That HERC has remained largely empty, so kind of a two-part question. Do you think it's appropriate for the National Guard troops to be doing shelter work, number one? Number two, given that it's largely standing empty, do you think this HERC was a good use of the taxpayer?
Thank you. National Guard, we know, is deployed for various reasons across the country, so I don't necessarily think that it is inappropriate for the National Guard to be in place here at the HERC. As far as the HERC itself and the capacity for the HERC, we, the expectation, obviously, was for there to be more asylum seekers coming in, so we understand why the capacity for the HERC was taken up as-is. But we did raise issues regarding the HERC and Randall's Island, you know, the council did, and we did have a difference with the administration on the HERC to begin with. So we've toured it. We know that there was a commitment made to construct it, but we really do have to ask the question whether or not there really is a need right now to use these resources. Thank you.
So you said you're going to pass through the maps and not take action on them. Do you think that the commission is going to make any adjustments to the maps further? And do you think that they have the legal right to and the ability to? Would you challenge it if they did?
I can't really speak on what the commission is going to do at this point. I mean, we're doing our work as a council according to the charter, so our work will have been done according to our constitution as a body. I really can't anticipate on the hypothetical of what the commission is going to do as a result of our response.
Speaker, I was wondering, do you support the solitary ban and legislation as it's currently in place?
We're still working through the solitary ban bill. I think that there may, we may need to look at some minor adjustments to it, but as far as the bill itself, I think that it is still a very strong bill. It is still going through the process. We're still discussing it, but there may need to be a few tweaks here and there.
Could you give us any insight onto the areas of the bill you think might need to be?
Well, we're still talking about it, so there are a few points that we still have to work through. Hi, Emily. Queens in the House.
Yes. May I ask you to sound further on what changes were made to the proposed district map that made it more political to you and the members? Is the decision not to hold a vote, is that a technical procedural matter, or is it a statement in and of itself?
If you can repeat the last part, the decision to what, the vote?
No, I don't know if it's a decision, but not holding a vote to approve.
Oh, the resolution.
Is that a statement in and of itself, or is that a procedural matter?
Yeah. Our decision, again, comes as a result of the majority of the council members feeling comfortable with the maps as-is and, you know, fulfilling our mandated charter response and not passing a resolution because the majority of the members feel fine about the lines as-is. So that is really what we're standing on right now. The difference between the initial maps and the final results from the commission, or what appears to be the final results from the commission, were a very, very big, very, very big difference for a lot of the district spaces in the borough, for the members, the whole nine. The movement had a lot to do, in my perception, of the tremendous work that the commission did in getting the public engaged in the procedure, and it was just monumental the way that the public came out and actually voiced their opinions on their areas in the respective boroughs. So as the public moved, I think so did the commission, and I think the commission absolutely did their due diligence by listening to the public response.
And may I additionally ask regarding the race for governor, who is expected to be campaigning for the incumbent Governor Popol, will rally your members to do the same polls to show that she needs every Democratic vote?
Well, I can't rally my members, but I do support the governor. This is a very, very important election, needless to say, not just for New York, but across the country. It's a very, very pivotal election, and it is very, very critical that folks do get out and vote. There are ballot proposals, so I need to remind everybody to flip it or miss it. When it comes to the ballot itself, there are ballot proposals affecting racial justice that are on the ballot, on the back of the ballot. So, yeah, I do support the governor. I support the voting process, and I'm going to continue to, you know, carry both of my parents with me as I go and vote on the eighth. Thanks.
Another question on redistricting. How many members actually filed objections with your office? And then also, how many would it have taken for the council to actually pass a resolution objecting to the maps?
Well, I can answer the first question. It escapes me. The number itself escapes me. It would have taken a majority of the members, just like the flip side of what we actually have right now, a majority of the members, to say no to the commission proposal. So where we have a majority of the members saying, "Yes, this is fine," it would have been the exact opposite in the other case.
Is there anybody who can give that number?
Yeah, we can give that to you, yeah, after the, sure. Absolutely. Thank you.